All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Tonight is our December 4 regular meeting, council regular meeting. What we'll do first, if everyone could please rise, I'm going to ask Councilman Getteman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we have, this is part of the stuff that we really enjoy doing, the presentations that we get to do up here. So the first one tonight is we're going to honor Joey. And Joey's here, right, Joey? Wave your hand. Oh, right in front. That's why I missed you, Joey. I'm sorry. But Joey Cantanzaro served on our last town council, and part of the tradition of the council is that anyone who's served, we do reward them. I don't know if rewards the right word, but they'd have the opportunity to select a town chair. It can be a rocker or just, what's the opposite, what's the other? Captain's chair, thank you. I should have written that down before the meeting started. But what I'd like to do is Councilwoman Tompkins, I'm sorry. Joey, if you'll please, we do have a little presentation for you tonight. And make sure you're facing the camera, Joey. You want to get on TV. That's important. There you go.
It is my honor to present a chair tonight to Joe Cantanzaro, who served the 21-23 term on the town council. While he was on the town council, he served as liaison to the Conservation Commission and Inlands and Wetlands, and is currently on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So he's continuing to serve even though he was not reelected. So this chair is the prototype of the one you'll be getting, Joey, if you want to try it out for size.
It's a little big, but I like it.
Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. It was an honor to serve with you, so.
Congratulations, Joey.
I just wanted to say how grateful I am for the generosity of the town council to present me with this chair. Absolutely beautiful. I loved my learning experience with you guys, and hopefully to continue serving the town of Plainville.
Well, thank you. And Joey, just, you know, having served with you, thank you for your service. Thank you for your volunteering for the town, and I'm glad to see you want to continue to do that. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, at this point, we'll move on to our second presentation. We have some service awards for the fire department. And before I ask Councilman Underwood to come down, one of the things I think, one of the things I like about this particular service award night is we're recognizing 190 years of service to the community by the gentlemen, and I'm not sure if we have any, you know, women and the men that we're going to honor tonight. So, you know, I don't know if this happens in every town where we're able to recognize 190 years of service, but, you know, certainly for myself and the council and the town, the town staff and the community itself, we thank you for your service. We thank you for your dedication, you know, and hopefully we can do this again next year, and we'll have, you know, maybe crack 200 years' service. So with that, I'll ask Councilman Underwood.
Chairman Wazurko, we do have women and men to honor this year. I'd like to take this time to have a moment of silence to honor and pray for our firefighters. All-powerful Father, I ask you to look upon the earth and bless your servants, who are members of the Plainville Fire Department community. I ask that you bless and honor their willingness to sacrifice themselves for the sake of others. Give those heroes the protection and strength they need to carry out their civic function in a way that honors and upholds your holy name. Amen. This time, I'd like to have Chief Muccini come up front, please. I always like the giving out of a chair to a fireman. Usually, it is 40 years, 40 years of service, they get a chair. I figure by that time, they deserve a chair. Anyways, Taylor Bokus, come to the front, please. Five years' service.
Not here.
Not here. Adam Centarelli, five years' service, to the front. Taylor Rizzo, five years' service. They're at the fire department selling Christmas trees, if anybody wants to know. Elijah Spada, five years.
No.
Amy Ziegler.
No, she's sick.
James Lenoys Jr., 20 years. And by the way, Amy had 10 years then. Kurt Plord, 20 years. And that's Assistant Chief Plord. Here you go, Tommy. Congratulations, Chief. Next one is Philip Broschew, 25 years. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. George Davy Jr., 30 years.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. And the next is 40, 40 years. 40 years. My goodness, that's a long time. Andrew Moore, 40 years and a chair.
You deserve this. Everyone in your family deserves one.
Thank you much for your service. Thank all of the fire department for your service.
All set. All right, so again, thank you, everyone, for being here. This is one of the more important things, I think, we do as a town, is to recognize those who volunteer and put themselves at risk to save property and keep property safe, keep people safe. So thank you very much, and we won't, I don't think the council would, we wouldn't have a problem if you didn't stick around for the rest of the meeting. If you had something better to do tonight, we understand. So if, we might take a couple minutes here, let people who need to clear out, clear out, and then we'll continue. We'll continue the meeting after, but thank you again for being here. All right, why don't we go ahead? We'll continue the meeting. We're up to item number two, public hearing. We have none scheduled for tonight, so we will move right to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
A motion to approve the minutes of the October 30, 2023 special meeting and the November 20, 2023 regular meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, announcements and reports. I know I was going to turn right to Councilwoman Ramanti to start. Go ahead.
Well, I won't have the Library Board of Trustees meeting, I'm their liaison, until next week, but I did want to mention that at a previous meeting, the Library Board requested that we do a town council proclamation for Margaret Lerma Surier, who is, well, no, on December 14th, will be concluding 38 years of service as the library assistant for youth services. And she's sort of, in many ways, sort of the face of the children's room over the years, and beloved by many families in Plainville. And so I have made the request, and will be presenting that on December 14th, when they're going to do an all-day type of celebration for Margaret's retirement. Thought it was worth mentioning, she's really, you know, been quite dedicated to the town, and is a town resident also.
That's it?
That's it for tonight.
All right. We'll open up. Anyone else with an announcement or report this evening? All right. Just one little thing. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to do it a little differently, but I'll do it as an announcement. I had the privilege this year of being, for the second year in a row, at the Senior Center for Thanksgiving Day Dinner, which, there's two volunteers, and I'm sorry, I don't have both their names. George Fensick has been doing it for 30 years. Every Thanksgiving Day, he's there organizing the people and making it happen, and he has a sidekick, I don't know who, it's a lady, I can't think of her name. You know her name?
Sandy.
Sandy Fensick? Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't know, and I don't know the relationship, but she's been there for 38 years, so. But it was a great meal. It was a great time with, it had to be over 60 people that came, and I also understand now that they are preparing, and they've got a menu put together, and they're asking people for Christmas Day that are seniors that would like to participate. So something to keep, keep in mind, because I, like I said, I walked away full, and I had leftovers. So it was great.
Excellent. All right, anyone else? Any announcements?
One more thing.
Go ahead.
The Memorial Day Committee had its first meeting.
Wow.
We got together for breakfast this past week, and then we just started talking about different things that are happening, and trying to see where we're going to go this year to try and top last year's parade and ceremonies. But it's time to start reminding people, even though it's only six months away.
Yeah, less than six months.
It goes quick.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
So if you're thinking about being involved with Memorial Day, let us know.
Yes, we're always looking for volunteers for the Memorial Day Parade. Contact, you know, contact the town manager's office, or send an email in. We'll be happy to, we always have room for everyone. And just, anything else?
No, no, I'm done.
Anyone else? Because the only one I want to announce tonight, next Wednesday, December 13th, Santa's going to drive through Norton Park. The public's invited. Pretty much, you park your car, and we'll have some people helping assist with parking. You're welcome to sit there, and Santa, I believe, will go through twice.
Yes.
The park, is that true?
Yep.
And it starts, he'll, he should be here at 6 o'clock, as long as his schedule allows, but you know how busy he gets this time of year, so. 6 o'clock at Norton Park next Wednesday, for anyone that's interested in seeing Santa. All right, we'll move to item number five, appointments and resignations. We do have a couple tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Underwood.
Motion to appoint Joseph Severio as fire police and support staff to the Plainville Fire Department.
Motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to ratify the town manager's acceptance of the resignation of Brent Davenport from the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, is there any other appointments or reappointments to boards or commissions this evening? Okay. All right, I think we're all set then. No problem. We'll be back next month. Next, Board of Education Liaison, which is the third Monday of the month, or our second meeting of the month, so we'll move past that, and Report of the Town Attorney. Good evening. Yes?
Thank you very much. I think we've gotten off to a pretty good start so far. I've had a couple meetings with the manager and the assistant manager, and I met with the assessor, I met with Attorney Mastriani. I took a bunch of files and arranged for other files to be stored at the town. I'm going to be meeting with the superintendent on Wednesday afternoon, and with the assessor on Thursday morning, on some pre-trials. You guys, the town has a lot of matters going on now, but, you know, it was not anything that was unexpected as far as the volume is concerned, and we're pretty much ready to go.
Okay.
So unless anybody has any questions, I don't really have anything else.
Okay. Any questions, anything for the town attorney this evening? Thank you. All right, we are moving to item number eight, Report of the Town Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. First item is item number one, Middle School of Plainville renovate like new project. There was, of course, the joint meeting of the town council and Board of Education on Wednesday, November 29th. There were a few questions raised as to the timing of the referendum and selecting the appropriate date, so obviously, this will be an item that the council will have to wrestle with in terms of the meeting on the 18th, as we prep for that, and sending out the process for setting a public hearing and referendum date. So in that vein, I am working with the town staff and town attorney to review those requirements, and the town clerk, but we're also going to meet internally on Wednesday with the superintendent to make sure we go through frontwards and backwards all of those requirements and necessary steps that we need to take for that process. So again, as I go into some of the issues we're looking at, in addition to setting the date, is the budget vote itself, whether, you know, absentee ballots are allowed, and I believe the preliminary answer is yes to that, but you also may consider the fact that the timing of the vote can be changed if the council desires. And again, we're going to, I think, the town attorney concurs that that's within the authority of the council, so instead of a simple, you know, 12 to 8, you could open it up 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, if you feel it's necessary. So those are the things we just want to make sure we, you know, we kind of throw out to let you know, and that we'll go through internally and, you know, send some information out to you in terms of guidance with respect to the meeting on the 18th, which will have these action-oriented items. So that's a work in progress, and again, that'll come back on the 18th. Item number two, EV charging stations. The town of Plainville currently has two electronic or electric vehicle EV charging stations, one at the municipal center and the other at the Plainville High School. Both units are identical and were stalled over a decade ago with state grant money. These units are outdated, obsolete, and the town is looking to upgrade using available rebates and incentives, and the town has opted to utilize the Services of Resources Lighting and Energy, RLE, a partner of Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, CCM, and with their assistance, the town is pursuing the installation of five Level 2 charging stations at the municipal center, library, rec department, Plainville High School, and Pateroski Park. And a result, as a result of the available incentives through Eversource, and I believe the state's involved as well, this solution is at zero cost to the town. So I think it's a great opportunity, and he has taken the point, and has done a great job in terms of shepherding this through. The town attorney has looked at contract review, and again, not costing the town anything but our municipal locations to set up that. So we'll be fine-tuning that as we go through, and looking at the projected timeline for installation of those five locations. Item three, Roadways Garage Project Update. Just wanted to give you an idea of what we've been working on at the previous council, engaged in, and I will preface that, this is informational, and obviously is ongoing study of that. It's not something that we would be taking action on prior to the middle school. I think the middle school is obviously priority. We'll go through, and at some point later in 2024, we'll be taking a look at this, but I wanted to get it in front of you and have a discussion of it, so if there were concerns and questions that you have, that you'd be familiar with it, but the town of Plainville has retained LaRero Engineering Associates, LEA, to complete the preliminary evaluations of multiple sites in Plainville to construct a new Department of Public Works or Roadways facility, consisting of a main warehouse building, loading docks, lay-down areas, office space, salt shed, fueling station, and employee parking. Two locations for the proposed facility were considered. Site one was at the current Public Works facility on Granger Lane. Site two is at Norton Park, at the location of the existing Building and Grounds facility on Norton Trail. Those two are really the only two viable. We looked at other property, including the town property owned out at the airport, but because of the Aqua Protection Act, that is not feasible for us, and we were trying to avoid any acquisition costs in part of this process. So LEA has completed preliminary evaluations of each site to assess their ability to support Public Works facility that meets the needs of the town, and determine which of these two sites would be best suited for construction and operation of a facility. LEA recommends that Site 2, which is the Norton Park site, be considered for location of a new joint facility between the Town of Plainville Highway Department and Building and Grounds. This recommendation is based on the following, that Site 2 offers enough space to accommodate the needs of both departments, and the need for new Building and Grounds facility in the future, because essentially, there, I would say, Roadways is a lot further deteriorated than Building and Grounds, but it's not much better, is, I guess, the point to make. And I also provided pictures that weren't in in the original information that I sent in terms of survey, but certainly, at any point, and probably a good idea in the future for the council to take facilities, you know, take a tour, and take a walk-through, if you will, a site walk on both of those, when time permitting, and probably in the spring, and after we get through the middle school and budget process. But I think that would be, I think the pictures are helpful, but I think actually seeing it firsthand, I think, gives you another dimension. So what we're doing, Site 2 incorporates all the, obviously, wants and needs of both the departments, determined in the site visits and meetings with Town of Plainville staff. This includes the expanded operation and storage space, additional office space, new fueling station, and a salt shed, and additional outdoor storage. Site 1 does not offer the space to incorporate a new salt shed into the conceptual design, and thus, additional locations will have to be considered if the Public Works facility is to remain at Granger Lane. Site 2 offers constructible space to accommodate future expansion, and there is potential to add more vehicle bays, parking areas, outdoor storage, additional buildings, if future expansion of the facility is required. So the preliminary cost estimates are $5.5 million for Site 1 Granger Lane, $13.6 for Site 2 at Norton Park. Both projects would require bond funding, and there's a bond request that we have pending at the state level for $3 million to defer the cost of the project. And again, that issue will, again, run its course through the governor's office and the State Bond Commission. I don't know in terms of the timing, but that'll come from our state rep and our state senator in terms of their request to put that forward. So what will remain to be seen is what type of timeline we'll have, if and when that is authorized, and how much time we'll have to use both state funds with local funds. And so that is it. There's additional information with respect to additional schematics in the full-blown report of the LEA, if anyone's interested, I can certainly send that out. Item four, Condeale Lane Acceptance as a Town Road. It's an action item under New Business tonight. Condeale Lane subdivision was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2018. This construction wrapped up almost two years ago, but the road was cut up by Eversource Gas without the developer's knowledge before all roadwork was completed, so it created a problem in terms of trying to get it to the standard that we could accept it. After eventual completion, the town engineer, John Bossy, inspected the improvements and signed off, indicating the road and all associated improvements have been satisfactorily completed. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to release the road bond on November 14, 2023, and at the same time, made a positive referral to the town council for formal acceptance of the extension of Condeale Lane as a town road. And as I mentioned, there is an item under New Business to accept this, to accept Condeale Lane as a town road. Item five is Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is annual grant, covers the total estimated cost for salaries or stipends for full, part-time EMDs, deputy EMDs, and support staff. The amount is $17,445, and this also is an item under New Business to approve the resolution that's in your packet, and authorize myself, the town manager, to submit an application for the annual grant. And Ron Divert is the EMD, and he does a wonderful job for us in terms of managing the grant and the supplies and services that we do through emergency management. Item six is Discover Plainville Steering Committee. I believe we mentioned that at a previous meeting. It just kind of floated the idea that we're proposing the town council establish a temporary steering committee for the purpose of economic and brand development. More specifically, the Steering Committee named the Discover Plainville Steering Committee would be tasked with helping town staff develop a town slogan or tagline and a logo. The proposed membership is nine to 10, would be myself, the assistant town manager, Cal Heilberger, who is the EDC, Amanda Gilbry, and Sarah Tomzick, Matthew Collado. These are our social media assistants, if you will, for lack of a better term, that are helping us in terms of our team. And then we'd like a member of the council, and one to two members of the council, and one to two members of the business community. And when I, you know, business community, I think, you know, if we could, if I could reach out to, you know, Tilcon, or J. Timms, or CWPM, or Manifor, you know, in terms of a long history and understanding the culture and the community, that sort of thing. And I'm not, you know, I don't think it's going to be a large community, we're trying to keep it manageable, and just get it started. And we had mentioned a survey that would likely kick it off in terms of engaging the community and trying to get input, so I would hope that we'd have some volunteer, or at least one volunteer from the council, that would come forward, and we'd be happy to kick that, get that started. And it would be temporary, it would be finite, it wouldn't go on forever, it wouldn't be recurring, it would have a couple of months, and then report out, and hopefully have some great ideas for a slogan, catchphrase, and work that would progress for a logo, which I think would probably take a little bit longer. But any case, if there are no objections, we'd like to get that going, and if there are members that are interested, certainly happy to.
So yeah, so I just ask if everyone is okay with moving forward with this? Nobody objects?
No.
And I would say, if anyone does want to volunteer, please let the town manager know, and, you know, hopefully you get, even two would be nice, as you said in your statement, so. So let the town manager know if you're interested.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Item seven is just the winter season reminders, as we've now entered the month of December. Snow and ice removal ordinance. The Town of Plainville general code requires owners and tenants of any property adjacent to a sidewalk to remove snow and ice from the sidewalk no later than 24 hours after the end of snowfall. Owners and tenants should also remove any ice or fully, or fully cover any ice with sand, ash, or similar substance within 24 hours of formation. Owners, tenants, and contractors are prohibited from plowing, throwing, and pushing snow or ice into any public highway, street, or roadway. And this information is all available on our website, but there's also a fire hydrant snow removal. The Town of Plainville Fire Marshal would like to remind residents and business owners to keep fire hydrants free from obstruction of snow during the winter season. As you shovel or remove snow from your driveway and sidewalk, please take time to clear a three-foot circle around the fire hydrant to keep it accessible. We appreciate your help in keeping the community safe, and I think it goes... And I think it goes to note also that, I think it was the former chair, Kathy Paglisie, had requested and suggested that we mail out some flyers that we do, which, you know, people can put out on their, or cut out and put on their refrigerator or on their bulletin board, or wherever they wanted, as a reminder, which I thought was a great graphic reminder to instruct people that live by. So that's one. The all-night parking ban runs from December 1st through April 1st. It is unlawful for the owner or operator of a motor vehicle to park that vehicle on any street in the Town of Plainville for more than one hour between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. on any given day. And I know, I spoke with Councilor Hurley today, and I know he's got some suggestions on that, which I think, you know, are pertinent and would be helpful. So I'll certainly defer to Councilor Hurley.
Basically, in our conversation, we brought up the fact that nowadays, we have, you know, pretty good weather forecasts as to what's happening, and people have short driveways, small driveways, and more cars than they have driveway. And so consequently, I was thinking, I was thinking, and we could take advantage of our emergency broadcast system. We could expand it, number one, to get more people involved in it and participate with it. And we could change the ordinance to be as when we call an emergency. And we could also, at the same time, we could adjust, instead of just being midnight to six, we know a storm's coming in at eight o'clock. We can say parking ban starts at seven and goes till. I totally understand the reason of the parking ban is because of plows and sanding and salting and all of those things need to be done. But I think having the flexibility to be able to warn people, rather than just a state the rest of the winter where nobody can park, I think we need to discuss this, and maybe we can come up with some really fine ideas and a good program that we can alert the town. And it might have other advantages to it in that, you know, if we had other kinds of emergencies, we'd have a good working system that people were used to, you know, paying attention to. So that's my conclusion.
Yep, no, that's, I agree. Do you have a comment?
You know, interestingly, I had a conversation with a resident recently about the very same thing. And once again, it was, you know, like, sort of multi-generational families, there's a lot of cars, and they don't all fit in the garage and the driveway. And they understand that they would have to have them move during the, you know, the bad weather, when the plows and the road treatment is going on. But I had never really thought of it, but I can see now how it could be a concern and maybe something we do need to revisit, especially with the ability to communicate online with people and automatically through the phone calls, et cetera. Yeah.
Well, we could always, you know, add in a notice on our website. We can do the reverse calls. There's a lot of different things and ways we can get ahold of people immediately, you know.
That didn't exist before.
Or prior to, so that they got a warning. But most people watch the weather, and they'll know that here comes a warning, there's going to be no parking in Plainville. I think it behooves us to do it that way more so than the, just the automatic overnight, because that doesn't give the highway department any flexibility. They can't really technically start salting the roads until midnight when there's no cars. I don't know if you are aware that, you know, when they're spreading the sand and salt on the road, it flies all over the place. If you've got a car on the side of the road, you're going to get hit with it, and dent and chips and all that stuff. So, I mean, it's, I really think we need to quickly work on this. And you were going to talk, Mike, you were going to talk with the chief about it, or somebody about the system, whether they could handle this?
Yeah, we're going to look into, I haven't had a chance yet, but looking into, I believe it's called Code Red, and that system will need training, myself and Andy, just to use that as another tool. But between the town website, the Code Red notification, social media, I think that Dan's point is well taken, that I think we can do a better job in terms of saying, and obviously forecasting has come a long way as well, that we can, you know, in touch with the public works department, roadways, to say, you know, this is what we expect, this is what we know. So it's definitely reminder. It's a reminder that help us, help you by getting off the street and allow us, plows to get through and do their job. So it's a supplement, and it's an enhancement that they can make it more efficient.
All right. Well, I'm open to more information about it, certainly. I think we should keep talking about it, so thank you.
Sure, okay. Then I had the mailbox replacement policy is also in effect. Residents are expected to maintain their mailbox in such a manner that it will stand a New England winter and the weight and impact of snow, slush, and ice being discharged by the snow removal equipment. You know, mailboxes should not be rotted or deteriorated and should be installed according to the U.S. Postal Service guidelines. And so this is, this comes up every season, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, the nature of the storm, the, you know, some of the precipitation is heavy and wet, and when it gets going, it's like a projectile, and it can take out mailboxes. And so you really have to go in and inspect and make sure every year that, you know, you're not having any rot or loose bolts or anything like that, that the box could become flying off. And, you know, we're just, again, it's just a reminder. And of course, in there are situations where our plow actually hits the box, we do replace that. So it's not like we're not, you know, working with people. We do, and we try to avoid that at all costs. But the nature is that the snow slush coming off the plow has an impact. And so, you know, depending on where your box is and how it's fortified, it becomes an issue. That's all for the winter warnings or winter reminders. If I could, I just wanted to add one item before we get to Andy and Happenings, that AmeriCold is ready to go online soon. And we have an opportunity, the council has an opportunity for a lunch and tour. And so I'd like to know, when you get a chance, if you could let me know via phone call or email, if December 19th or December 21st works for the council, on either of those two dates. And we'll see what we have for a majority, and they're trying to get us in for a lunch and a tour. So anyone that's interested, let me know, and let me know what date works for you.
All right.
And with that, I will turn it over to Andy for Happenings.
Thank you, Mike. First off, the Plainville Youth Services Department and the KIM program, the Kids in the Middle program, are hosting a hygiene drive for the food pantry, ending on December 8th. You may have seen a box when you entered into the municipal center. There's also a box at the Recreation Department and for students at the middle school. So you're welcome to drop off any type of hygiene products. There's a list of items that they're accepting, like toothpaste, toothbrushes, and so on, right on the box. The 2024 Fire Prevention Calendars have been issued. This is an annual event open to fourth and fifth grade students, and the contest's goal is to increase awareness on the best fire prevention safety practices. The artwork that is in the 2024 calendar, which is from last year's winners, I believe in the new year, will be, some Plainville students are entering into the contest, so we'll take a look at their submissions. But these calendars are available to the public. You can pick them up at the Municipal Center. And I've handed them out for members of the town council. Anyone here today, I have some additional ones. So if you'd like to take one, I believe, then, over there. There should be plenty for all the public that is here today. But if you have multiple rooms or desks, I can always grab more. From the Plainville Historical Society, on Saturday, December 9th, they will be hosting a Treasures of the Children's Room. This is at 1:00 p.m., and it's followed by a Holiday Open House from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's at the Plainville Historical Center at 29 Pierce Street. This is an event open to families and people of all ages. The program will showcase a variety of vintage toys, dolls, train sets, and items associated with the old Broad Street School. And one of the highlights will be a large dollhouse that was built in 1913 as a Christmas gift. From the Public Library, and for any information on library programs, including registration, you can call the Plainville Public Library at 860-793-1446, or go to www.plainvillect.com/library. A Holiday Performance by pianist David Eberle will be this Thursday, December 7th, at 6:30, open to all ages. You can register in advance. The Plainville Flute Choir Performance is Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:00 p.m. Refreshments will be served, also open to all ages. The Sensory Exploration, which is a program presented by the CAP Lab of Yukon, this is on Tuesday, December 5th, so tomorrow, at 9:30 a.m., and then again on Thursday, January 4th, at 9:30 a.m. This is open for anyone zero to 11 months with their caregiver, and essentially, it's everyday household items can become a tool for building curiosity and engagement and to build musical sensory exploration within infants. Last thing from the library is the Dungeons and Dragons for Beginners Club on Wednesday, December 13th, and January 10th, and February 7th. Each of those are at 4:00 p.m. This is for individuals ages 11 to 17. Players will learn the fundamentals of Dungeons and Dragons, where they will, where their decisions will have a direct effect on the world and the story that they create together. And from the Plainville Senior Center, for all programs from the Senior Center, you can call them at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Caregiving Connections is on Tuesday, December 12th, at 10:00 a.m. You can connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one-on-one through the journey and recognizing the challenges of 24/7 caregiving. They are doing a vaccination clinic at the Senior Center. This is in partnership with Stop &amp; Shop on Wednesday, December 13th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. This clinic includes the COVID vaccine, a high dose flu vaccine, HSV, shingles, pneumonia, and appointments are required, and you must bring your insurance card. Santa Ornaments class is on Thursday, December 14th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It is $10 to participate. It does include all the materials, and it is hosted at the Senior Center. Michaela's Garden Seed Packing Day on Monday, December 18th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Pettit Family Foundation will be packaging seed packets, and pizza will be served following the event. Help for Veterans on Tuesday, December 19th, at 10:00 a.m. This is by appointment only, and you can call Jason Coppola, the Veteran Service Officer, at 203-805-6340, and this individual can help you out finding your veteran status or if you need any help with paperwork. Grandparents Raising Grandchildren is on Tuesday, December 19th, at 10:30 a.m. And this is where, an opportunity where you can share resources and ideas and struggles, among other things, with other folks who are also raising their grandchildren. And the last item from the Senior Center is the Christmas Cookie Decorating Party on Tuesday, December 19th, at 1:30 p.m. The cost is $2 to participate, and you can enjoy a sweet afternoon of decorating Christmas cookies, among other festive and holiday activities at the Senior Center. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's, going back to the town manager's report, is there any comments or questions for the town manager on anything he reported?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to let the town manager know, I would be interested in serving on the Discover Plainville Steering Committee.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Michael, you did mention at the end of the, when you were reading the things on the Granger Lane and the public works, that we could get electronically copies of the other parts of the document that came, because that would be very, very helpful, especially the drawings, so we, like, really look at the footprint of the proposal on Site Two would be very, very helpful. I know, I'd like all of, everything that's there, yeah.
I could take, after the meeting, I could post it, or tomorrow, I can post the entire report to the town council dashboard. It'll be too large to send over email, so if you log on to your dashboard, it's quite a large, well, and plus with all the drawings, it's quite a large document. So I'll post it to dashboard, there'll be a section underneath specifically for this project, but if you have any issues accessing it, you can reach out to either of us.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, and anything the town manager or assistant town manager said tonight? All right. We will move on to item number nine, public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You will get a ring at 30 seconds left, and then a second ring will indicate the three minutes are up. So anyone wish to address the council this evening? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'd like to start by saying a thank you to the town, and especially to the public works for the leaf pickup this year. And one of the reasons it really stuck in my mind this year, because of the amount of rain we had, and you could see these guys, it was difficult with the hoes trying to pick it up. They did a great job and stuck with it right to the end, and I'm thankful. The second thing I'm bringing up here is, this has been on my mind for a while. The report, the town report, the financial report, it keeps showing a projected fund balance for Wheeler School is $2,500 and some odd dollars. Yet it says the project is complete. What is the $2,500 for?
Yeah, the project's complete, but I believe that's the money from the state that we're waiting on release of the money that they hold back until they've looked and closed the project out.
Okay, it's on their burden, it's their problem.
Yeah, so physically and structurally, you know, it's been done for a while. It's just taking.
Yes, yes, sir.
It's a long lag between the state closing out and sending us all the remaining balance of what they owe us.
So it's their burden. Okay, that, next, what I'd like to get to is, let's see. Okay. If, next thing is, if renovations of the middle school is passed, does that complete school renovations?
Well, short answer, no. I mean, school renovations are never complete. It's a process that we're always going to have to, you know, eventually Linden Street's going to be 30 years old, and will need to be, you know, renovated or something will need to be done. But, you know, to expand on that, you know, the steering committee that was appointed in 2005 studied all five schools. So the middle school would be the end of that particular steering committee recommendation on how to renovate, or how to remodel or renovate each school in the district. So it's a yes, but it's, you know, believe it or not, Linden Street is going to be about 15 years old already, and, you know.
Got it. Oh, yeah. In fact, you opened up Pandora's Box on something there. You mentioned the Linden Street School. There is a lot of renovation that's taking place there when you went to the, you know, they have the new ball there, the open area, park area, and isn't that pretty much cleaned up, Linden Street School?
As far as construction?
Yes.
Yeah, Linden is.
So there's no major project on?
Oh, no, no, no. That's, yeah, there will be no major.
And Tom Fawn is in the same category, not to be concerned at this point?
Oh, I'm not. I don't know if that means.
No, I'm just asking, I don't know what the agenda is. Okay. Again, the last one, thank you for that. The, let's see, okay. The last thing you hear, and this was kind of caught my eye, is it said, I noticed in the paper, the write-up, there was a write-up in the local paper, and there was a question about residency for the town manager.
Yes, and.
And they said it was ambiguous or unambiguous?
Yeah, and we'll be addressing that. Item 12 tonight, other discussions of interest. I'll be, you know, between me and, I'm going to.
And the council.
My colleague, Councilwoman Tompkins as well, but, you know, we need, the council needs to address it. It failed at the last, in November, during the election, that question failed about removing the residency requirement for the town manager.
How does the charter say it now, that he should?
He should, yes. And I don't know the exact verbiage, but it says the town manager shall live in the Town of Plainville.
Well, I just, just a curiosity, if I go to this far to say, as far as I'm concerned, a town manager is a town manager, and back in the '30s and '40s, yes, town resident. But nowadays, every business you look at, they live in different communities, they don't, so.
And that's, and the council, you know, because it failed, which was a little bit of a surprise to me, but we are going to revisit it, and we are going to have to take some kind of action, and the council will just have to decide how they want to proceed forward with this. And, you know, I do agree with you.
Yes.
And part of the reason why I think the council put the question out there is, you know, we used to have the superintendent was required at one point, is no longer. The police chief was required to live in town at one point, that's no longer required. So this was, you know, just a logical next step for.
That was a 30, 40.
Some of us were thinking, so.
Thank you.
But we'll discuss a little bit, probably in a couple minutes, actually. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? I know. I know there's not a lot of you, but seeing no one else, I will close public comments. No old business tonight. We'll move right to item 11, new business. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Gettleman.
Would you like to make a motion to accept Condell Lane as a town road?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to adopt a resolution regarding the Emergency Management Performance Grant Application for Federal Fiscal Year 2023.
All right, a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries, and the last item under new business.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the taxed refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second to that motion.
All right. Motion in a couple seconds. Any comments or questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. We are now up to item 12, other discussions of interest. As we know, we did have four questions on the ballot in November, three passed, one did not, and that was regarding the Town Manager residency requirement. Currently, our charter says that the Town Manager shall live in the town of Plainville. Councilwoman Tompkins, after Election Day, she correctly reminded us that, you know, we need to do, we can't leave it where it is right now. So I don't know if you have any comments, Councilwoman Tompkins, you want to make, or do you have anything you want to say? Otherwise, I'll just continue on.
I don't know. I know initially, we gave, there was a two-year stipulation for him to find something until, you know, the charter issue was, you know, went to vote, and I think we were all shocked at the outcome of that vote. But I guess, and some people had said this to me, that they feel that they want their Town Manager to be invested in the town, just like we're invested in the town. We have to live here to be on the Town Council, and they, they want their Town Manager to be invested in the town. And I think they think that if he is a resident of the town and pays the taxes and the same taxes we do, the same mill rate that we do, that he would be more invested than if he's living out of town. I don't know how true that is or not. I think that would be different depending on who the person is and who the Town Manager is, so. I just, my concern is, first question I have is, is it still two years? I know his one year was in August, so, I mean, does he have till the following August to find something? Or if, what happens if we don't abide by the charter? I mean, is that even possible? Is that illegal, or is it, what happens?
Yeah, I mean, having been on previous councils, we've had this discussion, and, you know, I don't think what we're doing is illegal, and Town Attorney, if you, you know, we're probably gonna look, well, you know, before I hang myself, if you want to say something, that would be great, but no.
I typically would not interrupt you.
No, that's.
If you'd like me to comment, I'd be happy.
If you have one, yeah.
I had just a very short amount of notice that this was gonna be something that was gonna be an issue. So I represent Rocky Hill. We had the same requirement in Rocky Hill, we still have the same requirement in Rocky Hill. Typically, they have been very flexible with the amount of years that they give the manager to move. I know John Mayer was doing, he probably lived there four or five, probably was the manager four or five years before we actually just got an apartment. I mean, typically residency requirements are not domicile. You can have multiple residences, and so really, you know, you could pay somebody to do that, I mean, you know, really. So to my mind, those kinds of requirements, they're so easy to get around that, on the contractual part of it, that's something we want to take a look at. I'm not familiar as to what the specific terms are, so that would be one thing I'd look at. The other thing that I would look at, just with regard to the question of if it's a charter provision, is whether or not there could be either statutory or constitutional issues that are presented by that, if in fact, you instructed me to do that research. Because I'll tell you right now, if I start talking about constitutional law, I'll put you off sleep. You could sell it and put people to sleep at night. Because the government always has to have a compelling reason in order to do something. And so typically, when you have a constitutional right, which travel, and under the First Amendment, is a protected constitutional right, the right to travel, all right? And so whenever the government restricts that, you have to have the least restrictive means to do that when you have a fundamental right. So that would be an interesting analysis. I don't know that that would qualify as a fundamental right, but it would be interesting if you instructed me to do that, because a lot of charters have that provision in Connecticut. And so I think it would be an interesting thing to look at, but once again, I think you're better off having a decision that everybody agrees on, as opposed to asking your lawyer. I would prefer to see everybody agree on this.
Yep.
But if you ask me, I'll tell you, you know, what I think the law is.
All right, and, you know, we're not gonna solve it tonight, and I don't want to get too deep of a hole, but, you know, I think from my perspective, after, you know, reaching out to some people and having people reach out to me, the town did a poor job, quite frankly, of just communicating that there were questions on the ballot. Many people didn't understand what they were voting on, and I think human nature is, if you're not quite sure what it is, you're gonna just say no. So I think, you know, from my perspective and why we're bringing this up, and thank you, Councilwoman Tompkins, for, you know, reminding me to bring this up, you know, we do have to have a discussion as a council, what direction we want to go, whether, you know, what's, what's available as far as what direction we want to go and what we want to do. And, you know, I would say after we're out of here this evening, over the course of the next week or so, you know, please feel free to reach out and let us know what, you know, let me know what you want to do, and, you know, if we want to get some professional opinions, we can do that. If you want to just have a discussion with the council at like a work session, we can do that, but think about it for a couple days and, you know, let us know what direction you want to go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other discussions of interest?
Just one, Mr. Chair. On, tonight, we have, obviously, we had the presentation, which is always nice, as you said, to recognize, you know, service, and tonight was Fire Department. And I just wanted to bring to your attention an article I put before you tonight, which was about, entitled, "Firefighter Shortage Keeps Increasing." We have a volunteer department, like many in the state of Connecticut, and you'll see in the article that other towns are struggling like Plainville, and we're okay. I mean, I call it a struggle, I, I agree, it's a, it's a, there's a shortage, right? Some, from the heyday of when you had maybe, you know, 75, maybe 80 volunteers, you're much lower than that, half of that. So it's an important item, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, given that tonight we're recognizing them for their service, the men and women of the Plainville Fire Company. And I think what we're gonna try and do is collaborate and do a little bit more with respect to outreach and recruitment, and do a little bit more on social media to try and bring awareness to the fact that this is a very important issue, because I think we all understand what happens when you don't have a volunteer fire department, that it becomes very costly, very expensive to maintain, you know, paid professional firefighters. So I'm just raising it as an issue. I thought it was timely, so I think, you know, just to have it on your radar, and don't be surprised when you see if we're doing a video, or if we're doing some outreach, or we're doing a, you know, a post of something in terms of social media, and again, trying to coordinate with them, collaborate with the department, and do whatever we can to get more recruits to come in, because it is a commitment. It is a very significant amount of training, amount of time away from, from family, and let's face it, it is a public safety, a pure safety issue, right? So they're putting themselves in harm's way to fight fires for us, and I think we need to do all we can to try and recruit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I totally agree with what Mike is presenting here, and it's something you and I have kind of mentioned in casual conversation, that I think we need to come up with the way to start incentivizing people to, to at least get into the program and find out if they want to be a firefighter, some kind of orientation, just, we need to really, really promote this, because I can remember back, there used to be like a hundred firemen. It wasn't just 70 or 80. They were up there, they had big numbers. And in fact, if you remember the heyday of General Electric, when the fire bell went off, General Electric emptied. So it was, there was a lot of people that used to take a lot of time to volunteer and learn to be a fireman, and like Mike is saying, there isn't a very, a big expense to getting going on this. So I think we need to, to look into it and see what we can do to incentivize it.
Okay. Yes.
Possible, how about collaborating with the schools where they have the program where they send, where kids can go out to different businesses? Maybe we can do a volunteer a day at the firehouse, or have the fire department at the career day.
Great idea.
Okay. Any other thoughts, any other comments from anyone? All set?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, yeah, you know, we've talked about the fire company, and, you know, certainly we'll be looking forward, anyway, anything we can do to help, please let us know. Be happy to help. All right. No other discussions of interest. We'll move on to adjournment, since there's no executive session, so a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will be adjourned. Have a good week, everyone. Thank you.